...company of the Port Jervis Fire Department and the creation of the Port Jervis Fire Department's Special Operations Squad. Whereas, under Section C eight dash three of the Port Jervis Charter, the Common Council has the power to appoint one or more companies of the fire department. Under law, the entity that has the power to appoint also has the power to terminate or remove. Therefore, the Common Council has the power to terminate or remove any company. And whereas, under Section C eight dash three of the Charter, the Common Council has the ability to make the rules and regulations for the operation of the Port Jervis Fire Department and its respective companies. And whereas, under the Bylaws of the Port Jervis Fire Department, Section One, the Common Council appoints the fire companies within the Port Jervis Fire Department. And whereas, under Article Nine of the Bylaws of the Port Jervis Fire Department, there is wording that states there shall be nothing in the Port Jervis Fire Department Bylaws, nor any amendments to those bylaws, which shall prejudice, limit, extend, nor affect the authority or responsibility of the fire chief or the Common Council relative to the organization, training, and operations of the department, its functions of fire prevention and control, and other emergency services. Excuse me. And whereas, if the fire chiefs determine they wish to recommend that Foul Rescue and Salvage Company Number Three be disbanded, disbanded, excuse me, and terminated by the Common Council as a company of the Port Jervis Fire Departments, for reasons of lack of membership and the desire by the chiefs to reorganize that particular unit into the Port Jervis Fire Department's Special Operations Squad, the Council, the Common Council has the right to do so. And whereas, members of the Port Jervis Fire Department's Special Operations Squad will be composed of members of the Port Jervis Fire Department from any company or department. The squad will be composed of members of the order rescue operations, accident victims extrication, technical rope rescue rope team, and any other technical rescue team existing or therefore created in the Port Jervis Fire Department. And whereas, the proposed line offices of the Port Jervis Fire Department's Special Operations Squad would be the dive master and assistant dive master for water operations, the team leader and assistant team leader for a technical rope rescue, and accident victim extrication team leader, excuse me, and assistant accident victim extraction team leader. And whereas...
Time's up.
Oh, thank God. And whereas, the chief driver will be selected by the Port Jervis Fire Department chiefs and will be responsible for the vehicle slash vehicles and equipment on the vehicle slash vehicles used by the team. And whereas, the Port Jervis Fire Department's Special Operations Squad will follow the department's bylaws and standard operating procedures. Now, therefore, it is resolved as follows. The Common Council does hereby terminate Foul Rescue and Salvage Company Number Three, thus create the new Port Jervis Fire Department's Special Operations Squad, which will be housed in the area currently occupied by Foul Rescue and Salvage Company Number Three, adjacent to the City Municipal Building on Hammond Street. The Port Jervis Fire Department's Special Operations Squad will also use all of the equipment used for rescues, and the same will be housed at the current Rescue Number Three facility. All funds currently held by the Foul Rescue and Salvage Company Number Three shall be redesignated the Port Jervis Fire Department's Special Operations Squad, and a new account established in that name to be used for the benefit of operations of that squad and under the control of the department. The resolution you adopt should state that the current members of Foul Rescue Company Number Three shall have the ability to transfer to any other company within the fire department, as those members should request with their existing department and company years of service intact. And the Mayor and Common Council wish to thank all the current and prior members of Foul Rescue and Salvage Company Number Three for all the long and valiant years of service to the City of Port Jervis, the Port Jervis Fire Department, and the cities and visitors of the City of Port Jervis. I make a motion. We approve that. Mr. Segal's made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Foster. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. That was long overdue, and it will be an advantage to Port Jervis Fire Department to have that squad. So, thank you again.
Resolution by the Common Council of City of Port Jervis, Orange County, New York, reference to approve the city's application as submitting partner to the DHSES Fiscal Year 2016 Technical Rescue and Urban Search and Rescue Grant Program for up to $150,000 funding to herein be named Multiple Agency Emergency Response Team in order to obtain confined space rescue emergency, confined space rescue emergency response and training and equipment to authorize the Port Jervis Community Development Agency and its executive director to make the application and to administer any funding that is received in accordance with the DHSES regulations. Whereas, the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services, DHSES, has released a request for fiscal year 2016 to receive applications for grant funding from Technical Rescue and Urban Search and Rescue USAR teams in New York State in order to enhance their skills and services involving structural collapse, trench confined space, rope rescue, and response to terrorism and other catastrophic events. And whereas, under the terms of this grant program, the City of Port Jervis is eligible to apply as a submitting partner of a multiple agency team, which is composed of the City of Port Jervis on behalf of the City of Port Jervis Fire Department and the Spare Bush Fire District as a participating partner. And that this team of fire departments will use their grant funding to equip their departments and/or to train jointly, enhance their rescue and recovery skills in confined space emergencies. And whereas, under the terms of this grant program, the City of Port Jervis and the Spare Bush team is eligible, apply for $150,000 in grant funding for their confined space emergency training. And the Port Jervis Community Development Agency can be authorized to make application on behalf of the team and to administer any grant funds that are received on behalf of the team. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the Common Council of City of Port Jervis, Orange County, New York, that the Common Council proves that the City of Port Jervis shall serve as a submitting partner on behalf of the multiple agency team described above to make an application for the DHSES Fiscal 2016 Technical Rescue and USAR Grant Program for up to $150,000 in grant funding for equipment and training to enhance their rescue and recovery skills in confined space emergency situations, particularly in response to acts of terrorism and other catastrophic events. And resolved that Executive Director Vali Majinsky of the Port Jervis Community Development Agency is authorized to make application on behalf of the team to the DHSES via E-Grant System by September sixteenth deadline. And that the Port Jervis Community Development Agency and its director are hereby authorized to designate to serve as the representative of the team for purposes of completing the application process and to oversee administration of any grant award that may be obtained, but subject to any further resolutions of the Common Council that may be required by the DHSES regulations or applicable law. I make that a motion as well.
I'm going to motion by Mr. Segal to approve. In a nutshell, this is an application for Technical Urban Search and Rescue Grant. So, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Belcher, thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I was to write that, there would have been a lot of abbreviations. That might be the end of that whole story here. Yeah, watch our Facebook page, Port Jervis Fire Department, and a webpage, PJNYFD.com, for more information about the Port Jervis Fire Department. And that's all I have there. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything from Code?
The Code Committee met on the first, discussed our housing, discussed event fees, and they are continuing. The next meeting will be October fifth.
Public Works and Environmental Affairs, Mr. Belcher.
Thank you, Mayor. Recycling and Recycling will be on its normal schedule for the next two weeks. Center line and crosswalk striping will take place on the new paving on Fowler Street tomorrow, Tuesday, September thirteenth. So, be careful with your driving. Please remember that the EDPL hearing is scheduled for Monday, September nineteenth at seven PM here in the council chambers. This meeting is to discuss the land acquisition that is currently in progress for the tri-state bridge and the road widening project. Please attend if this affects you or your property. The City of Port Jervis Water Department is conducting lead testing throughout the city this week at multiple locations. This is being done due to the New York State Department of Health Regulations, which mandates the city to do this testing every three years, not in regards to any known problems. This doesn't mean that there's anything wrong with the water, which is required to do it. The next DPW meeting will take place on Monday, October third, at six PM here in the council chambers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Do you have something, Mr. Segal?
Yes, I apologize for that. Mr. Revosa gave me some stuff, and I forgot about it. The Code Committee last met on September seventh, two thousand and sixteen. Among the items discussed was the potential event fee. Mrs. Henry will be meeting with some event organizers to do some further research. We also discussed a potential housing program and changes that will be made to that. And Vali Majinsky from the CDA was present to discuss the zoning grant we received through the county and how that will proceed. The next meeting is scheduled for October fifth at seven PM here in the council chambers. The two that we just mentioned, the event fee and the housing program are very significant laws, and we really need public input. So, if people are interested in either one, then, once again, we would invite the public to come to a Codes meeting. The next one, again, is October fifth at seven PM. I've said this before, I'll say it again. We spend a lot of time trying to get the laws down right to satisfy the needs of the city and its residents. It's a lot easier to do the law the first time the right way than to do the law and then have to revise it several times. So, we're looking for resident and business input. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Police Committee?
Yes, I'd like to address the comment about the bar situation. The article did not portray the issue adequately, and that the problems discussed did not have anything to do with DADs. I think the article that was written was taken out of text when it was designed, but the article should have been just to inform the council as well as the town of the influx of downtown problems that had been going on. I don't know why the pictures was taken. I have no idea. And also, to tell the council and other people of the extra resources and potential budget cuts that could lay as we head into this budget, that we need police officers and the resources that the police gives. So, I apologize as well, and I'll make the apology from the Police Committee and so forth if it was a direct result of DADs. Police Committee will meet tomorrow, September thirteenth, seven PM here in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The A's on CDA.
I got it.
You got it? Thank you.
Last met, the CDA last met on Wednesday, August twenty-fourth. We went over the director's report, finances, and updates on existing programs and grants. The Orange County Office of Community Development Lead Hazard Reduction Program will be ending this month for those qualified to participate. Qualifications include: ownership of free nineteen seventy-eight houses or apartments, meet modest household income guidelines, must have a child under six who lives in or regularly frequents the home. The program may be extended for another year, and we will update you if that occurs. For more information, contact eight four five six one five three eight one one. Additionally, there will be a first-time home buyers information session the last week of October on the second floor of the Recreation Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. IDA, do we have anything?
Eight. September twenty-first at six PM.
September twenty-first at six PM here for the IDA. No business, really, I hear right now. Right? ADA, Mr. Foster?
Yes, ADA met on September sixth. It was reported that twenty ADA compliant ramps were installed on Fowler Street. Orange Rockland installed four ADA compliant ramps on East Main Street. Six to seven more will be, hopefully, be put in before winter. And if anyone knows where else to install anything with the ADA, please contact myself and Jack Farr, or Jack Farr. The next meeting will be on December fifth, right after the DPW meeting, right here in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Housing Authority, Mr. Segal?
Thank you, Mayor. The last Housing Authority meeting was August the twenty-third. The next meeting is September the twenty-seventh at seven PM at Hillside Terrace. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Recreation Commission, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, September seventeenth, Recreation Department is holding the Third Annual Rock in the City for Hunger Music Festival at Riverside Park. Live music starts at eleven AM and will run until four PM. Performing are the Carl Richards Band, The Ponytail, Side Effects, and more. We are asking all to attend, who bring canned food items or non-perishable goods. All donations will be given to a local food pantry. Please help us help the community. On Saturday, September twenty-fourth, the Recreation Department in the City of Port Jervis will officially name the tennis courts at Church Street Park, the Luanne McCarthy Tennis Courts. The ceremony will take place at Church Street Park at eleven AM. Luanne was a Recreation Commission member for over twenty years. She lost her battle to cancer last year. All are welcome to attend. U Center is now operating under its school schedule. The center is open Monday through Thursday, three PM to seven PM, and Friday, three PM to six PM. Friday night, T Night is every Friday night, six PM to ten PM. It is for middle school and high school students only. On Friday, September twenty-third, T Night will be held, will be holding a back-to-school dance from six thirty PM to nine PM. Also, upcoming recreation sponsored events include the Will of Orange Trail Run on October twenty-second. Also, the New York Jet Football Game on Sunday, October twenty-third. Tailgating, food, and bus ride will cost adults $130. For children, it's going to be $110. If you just want to go to the game and take the bus, it's going to be $90. Also, the Eerie Eighty Mountain Bike Race is Sunday, October twenty-ninth. And also, the Seventieth Annual Halloween Parade is Sunday, October thirtieth. For more information on these events or any recreation, please contact the Recreation Office at eight four five, eight five eight, four zero four five, or email us at PJREG@FRONTIERNET.net. The next Recreation Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September twenty-first at six PM at U Center.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it.
Tourism, Mr. Belcher?
Thank you, Mayor. I've said this many times, September twenty-fifth, Fall Foliage Festival. There's going to be vendors, live music, scarecrow contest, great food, roaming railroad, petting zoo, and an antique car show. And there'll be many more surprises. As of September seventh, we had a hundred and thirty-three vendors for the Fall Foliage Festival. More were expected. We had twenty-eight, twenty-five food vendors, thirty informational vendors, and sixty-eight merchandise vendors. We're also having the scarecrow contest. Individuals, businesses, clubs, and organizations are encouraged to participate. First, second, and third place ribbons will be awarded in youth, adult, and business club category. In addition, prizes, fifty-dollar Visa gift card, will be mailed to first-place winners in each category. Ribbons and prizes are sponsored by Arthur Trophy and Spun. Applications are on the Port Jervis website, portjervismy.org, or at local businesses wherever you see this sign. Applications are available also at the Gun Lady on Front Street, JJ Delly on Bike Street, Upfront Exhibition Space on Jersey Avenue, Hess Delly on Kingston Avenue, and the Spare Bush Post Office. And we'd like to thank Arthur Trophy for sponsoring the award ribbons and prizes for the first-place winners. We're also going to have a Halloween lighting contest. There'll be two categories, traditional or scary. To register your home within the City of Port Jervis, email portjervis, PJ Tourism Board at gmail dot com, or call eight four five, eight five eight, four oh one seven, and leave the following information: name, address, phone number, and category to judge. Entries are due by Wednesday, October nineteenth, at five PM. No cost to enter. Judging will be done on Thursday, October twentieth, after sunset. Winners will be announced at the City Council Meeting on Monday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen. First, second, and third place winners will receive a certificate of recognition. First-place winners will also receive a twenty-five-dollar gift certificate to JJ International Delicatessen. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
And your next meeting is?
Uh...
About then, right?
October twelfth, six thirty PM here in the council chambers.
Twelfth is, that's a Tuesday?
That's a Wednesday.
Wednesday. Okay, thank you.
The second Wednesday.
Thank you.
That's what the wind didn't have in it.
Zoning Board, Mr. Andazzo?
Thank you, Mayor. There was no, no meetings in September due to lack of business. The next zoning board meeting will be held on Tuesday, October fourth, in the council chambers at seven PM.
Thank you. And planning?
Planning Board had a workshop that we held on Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, in regards to US Steel. They're looking for information at one hundred to two hundred Skyline Drive. This was just an informational workshop. There was, the planning board members were present, some members of the council, some members of the public. We reviewed information, what types of information the planning board would be requiring. The applicant posed some questions and gave us some information, and they are looking possibly for a pre-submission in a couple of months. The next planning board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September twentieth, at seven PM here in the council chambers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Did he give you anything for plumbing or electrical? Okay. Senior Advisor, Mr. Segal?
Thank you. No significant events to report. I do want to indicate that there are apartments available at Waters Edge, should anybody be interested in that. And I want to wish my favorite one-hundred-year-old friend, Margaret Berger, best wishes on her new location in the Missouri. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Belcher, Access Twenty-three, report?
No report. I'd just like to thank Carl Richards and Marty Gruffung for being available to operate the cameras so our residents can see the council meeting. Thank you, Marty.
Thanks, Will. Thank you. Okay. Aside from what I sent you guys yesterday, I need approval to execute contract agreements for KV Carriage LLC. This is for the Tourism Board, and mountainside stables, petting zoo, and pony rides. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Mr. Foster. Discussion, and yes, for the Fall Foliage Festival. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. I just want to announce, Mary Decker's here from the hospital, and if you haven't heard the news already, Westchester Medical Center is a part-owner with Bonsecor Community Hospital and our local hospital, and they have been researching and working on a new variation of a hospital with a medical village, looking at promotion of health for all people at all times. They announced last week that they're going to do a project over forty million dollars worth of renovations to the hospital, making semi-private rooms private rooms, to change the whole entire emergency department and upgrade it, radiology and many of the radiological machines, and creating about a hundred jobs. So, I want to say thank you publicly to the hospital, and these are going to be a hundred well-paying jobs. So, this is something very important, not only to our community, but to the health of our community also. We want to thank Westchester Medical and Bonsecor.
Thank you for coming.
Ladies and gentlemen, as many of you know, the United States Military Academy contacted us. They are actually doing a two-day bike race. And one of those days, they want to do in our watershed, new watershed bike trails on October first. And what I'm going to ask is, pending the insurance coming from the United States, which is supposedly on its way, the loop is going to be entirely in the watershed in Elksbrox Park area. Mr. Fagion is requesting that we close Skyline Drive for the day and no public to the park while the United States Military Academy holds this mountain biking race. They're going to be parking cars on the road. There should be about a hundred and fifty to two hundred vehicles in that participation. So, what I'm looking for is a motion to approve the event and a motion to close the road.
Do I make a motion to approve the event?
I have a motion by Mr. Belcher to approve the event. Do I have a second?
A second.
And a second by Ms. Henry. And just under discussion, there is expected to be no overtime used in this event as the barricades will be set up on the Friday before. We'll ask garbage cans to be put up at the top of the hill, and then they'll do the cleanup on Monday. So, there shouldn't be any overtime associated. They're not coming through town or anything like that.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
The park is closed or the parking?
Well, we'll have to close the park because, unless somebody wants to walk, because we're going to close Skyline Drive.
Just the drive up there?
Drive. So, like, I don't know the bike route yet if we can open, you know, if you have some, if you have people walking up, say, Skyline Path from the reservoir parking area, and bikes are coming down, you know? Yeah, so we'll have to play that by ear whether we're going to completely close the park down during this event.
What's the hours of the closure?
Um, doesn't have them on here.
It wouldn't be for all day, just?
No, it would be just during the event. Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. And then, just the approval of the closed Skyline Drive during the event hours?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Andazzo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
So carried, thank you. I have a request from the Port Jervis Ambulance. Over the past few months, we, the Port Jervis Ambulance, have been in communication with Lowe's and Mattam Morris. They have chosen the ambulance corps for their yearly hometown heroes donation. They will be performing numerous up-